Just download it anyway.
Anyone be ready? Good evening and welcome to the October 6, 2025, meeting of the Select Board. My name is Ron Schneider. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast through Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon FiOS, and there's a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. Recording of this meeting will be available through the video on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the state fire marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. I would ask everyone now to please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. They're rearranging. Thank you, Mr. Olds. Let's start with board introductions, and let's start to my left.
Good evening. Jaclyn Schnackert, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Adal Kofflin.
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Jackie Gilfus.
Good evening, Eric Eldridge.
Good evening, Colin Moizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Sean Walsh, Assistant Town Manager.
Promoted.
Thank you.
Coup.
Just a new truck.
All right, item number two, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve and release the regular session meeting minutes for September 22, 2025, as printed.
Second.
I have your motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a couple of things.
Yes?
They're pretty minor, but I just wanted to note some corrections. On the second page, where it says, "Select person Eldridge resumes the acting chair position," Colin, did you want it to say the pro tem, which was the official language?
For the purposes of the meeting, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, there's a typo in a paragraph. I'll just have you correct that. It's fine. And then the other thing that's substantial is on the next page, section six, A? Six A? The motion for recommending the fundraising is listed as 401, but it was 400. And the last thing is, uh, new business 6B. It doesn't have any notes there about ratifying your contract, but we did do that 400, so that just needs to be added.
Good luck, and I'll thank you.
We did do that.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Noting those minor edits. All those in favor approving the minutes for the September 22, 2025 meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? That carries. Item number three, citizen and business time. Citizens or businesses may address the Select Board on matters of interest to the public for no more than three minutes. Does anybody want to speak at citizen time? Hearing none. All right, we move on. Item number four is the special permit hearing for Drakehead Water Supply District PFAS Treatment Facility, 166 Frost Road.
Mr. Chair, including your packet this evening is an application from the Drakehead Water Supply District for a special permit under section 2.11.30 Table of Uses of the Tingsboro zoning bylaws to expand the existing water treatment plant facility as indicated in the previous special permit at 166 Frost Road. The zoning bylaws permit a public or private utility in this zone, which is R1, only with a special permit from this board. This evening, our applicant has just received some feedback from the peer review, so they would like a continuance of the hearing at this point, so you'll need to open the hearing and then continue it.
Fine. All right, let's open that public hearing.
You got it. Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Second.
I have your motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
All opposed? Staying? That carries. 500. In light of what Jackie had just mentioned about Drakehead Water Supply District not being available until our next meeting, I think it's best if we could hold our comments until that meeting unless it's so onerous that you feel like you need to make those comments tonight. If you have to, if you feel like you need to make the comments tonight, we certainly welcome those comments, but I think it'd be more productive if they're there to respond to any comments that are made. I leave it up to the body. We okay with that? That's fine. All right, we will continue. We'll keep open the public meeting.
Yeah, I can make a motion to that.
Please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board continue this hearing to October 20, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue a public hearing until October 20, 2025. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries. 500. Thank you very much. Item number five, the Common Victular application hearing for True Coffee LLC, 161 Westford Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you this evening is an application for a new Common Victular license from True Coffee LLC located at 161 Westford Road, Unit C. They are seeking permission to operate a coffee shop seven days a week, Monday through Friday, from 6:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday from 7:30 a.m. until 3:30 p.m. Their application is complete and all the appropriate fees have been paid. The applicant is awaiting the issuance of liability and workers' comp insurance and will provide these prior to the delivery of licenses approved tonight. Legal notice was posted in Lowell Sun on September 22 and September 29, and the applicant mailed notices of the hearing to a butters by certified mail on September 25. We requested feedback from any department having jurisdiction over this type of request, and there were no adverse comments. The applicant will need to obtain a certificate of use and occupancy from the building department and building permits if required work needs to be done. The Board of Health noted that the applicant has filed applications with the Health Department and is awaiting inspections. The applicant is aware they will need to provide those insurances prior to releasing the local license, and the applicant is here this evening if you'd like to have him join you.
Really? People representing the True Coffee want to come forward? Sure. We don't bite that often. And if you wouldn't mind just stating your name, Poris, and your address?
Good evening, chairs and all members of Select Board. My name is Ai Pu. Most people call me Judy Pu. I lived in 32 Jogo Drive for more than 25 years. I'm here to request approval of the Common Victular license for True Coffee LLC. So here is our member, Paul Sun and Frank Sun. Paul Sun, he is our coffee consultant.
Yeah.
He owns Boston King Coffee at Uba more than 25 years. He has, he has a great experience, coffee business experience with more than 30 years. Frank Sun is our business manager, and he is an engineer with multiple degrees and has a good experience in different areas. The True Coffee is located at 161 Westford Road, Plaza, Unit C. That is the last unit of the building. So the total 65 parking lot space shared with Domino's, Hotter Works, and 32 golf simulation and a true coffee shop. So True Coffee Shop will open at 6:30 a.m. and close at 3:30 p.m. And the total 28 seats in the coffee shop. And we will serve typical breakfast, sandwich, coffee, cappuccino, lattes, and et cetera. We are committed to maintain a clean, safe, and a welcome environment for our customer and to operation in a company with local and state healthy, safe regulations. And we request, ask for your consideration and approval for the license so that we make it open and serve a local community after final inspection from building apartment and a border for healthy apartment. So we'd be able to answer any question you will have. Thank you for your considerations and thank you for time. This is what I do.
Thank you for appearing here tonight. I will be the first person at your coffee shop. Let me open it to our board and see if anyone has any questions. I'm going to start to my right. Select person Eldridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, welcome, and I think you gave a great overview of the business and your hours and what you're looking to do. I think it's fantastic. It's right up the road from where I live, so I look forward to it. I have no questions. Everything was well explained.
Thank you. Select person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Judy, I thought this was lovely. Most people do not come before us and really give us that much information, and I'm really glad that you did. So thank you so much, and thank you for the introduction. I think this is very straightforward, and I look forward to having you in the community. I don't drink coffee, though, so I will be there for breakfast sandwiches. Thank you.
Select person Cohane.
Thank you for coming in front of us tonight. I also look forward to going there, and thank you for opening your business in Tingsboro.
Select person Cofflin, sorry.
Yeah, no, welcome, and I actually live right around the corner, and I love coffee. So, and I was just recently telling my husband, you know, we need a cappuccino machine, like, because I just have a regular Keurig. So now I don't have to do that, so I can just come to there and enjoy what you have to offer. So, welcome.
And finally, I don't have any particular questions. I echo what the other members have said. We really appreciate you coming before us, explaining about your business. We wish you all the best. I think it's a, it'll be a welcome business to have in town. We need a nice coffee shop, so I, you know, all the best to you.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that the Select Board approve the application for a Common Victular license for True Coffee LLC at 161 Westford Road, Unit C, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? That carries. 500. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We introduce our coffee.
Yes.
Everybody knows the star.
Yes.
But our, our concept is star plus world best of 10 premium coffee we're serving to our customers.
Uh huh.
For example, Ethiopia, Tanzania, Kenya, Matra.
Yep.
And Costa Rica, Guatemala.
Yep.
Colombia. That kind of single origin premium coffee we are serving to our customers.
Looking forward to it.
Let's open, come by and enjoy our coffee.
I will drink her coffee.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thanks very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six on the agenda is a Common Victular license weekday and Sunday entertainment hearing for Choice Indian Restaurant, 440 Middlesex Road, Unit A5.
Mr. Chair, we are happy to present an application for a new Common Victular weekday and Sunday entertainment application from Choice Indian Restaurant at 440 Middlesex Road. They are seeking permission to operate a restaurant seven days a week, Monday through Thursday from 10 a.m. until 10 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 10 a.m. until 10, excuse me, 11 p.m., and Sunday from 10 a.m. through 10 p.m. The only forms of entertainment being requested are a TV and a radio stereo. The application is complete and the appropriate fees have been paid. A notice of the hearing was placed in Lowell Sun on September 22 and September 29. The applicant notified a butters of the hearing by certified mail on September 18. The applicant will provide a workers' comp certificate as soon as their insurance company can provide it, and is aware the license will not be issued until that is provided. We requested feedback from any departments having jurisdiction over this type of request, and there were no adverse comments. We have the applicants here this evening.
Would you want to come up and introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your business?
Good evening, Select Men.
Good evening.
A little nervous. Never done this before.
You're doing great.
You're easy. Relax.
I can speak about the business and everything very well. That's not a problem, but my name is Drew Patel, one of the primary owners in the business. Here I have this Yash Ravel with me. He's our consultant from the franchisee. He's going to be training us based on what we're going to be cooking and how we're going to be going forward with this project and everything else like that.
Yeah.
It's a very unique restaurant compared to a lot of other traditional Indian restaurants. This is westmost. Everybody asks, is it north or south? Or the west side of the country? More of a street food, quick bites, easy to eat. Not a lot of that is around this area.
Yeah, yeah.
I think on the whole northeast, there might be one more thing that serves food similar to us. We decided to come to town of Tingsboro because it's closer. We have a temple coming into town. We have Nashua on the other side with the other items and everything like that, so this was more of a centralized location for us. Also, between all the businesses we have besides Tingsboro, we'd like to go to towns where we can be part of the community. We can work with everybody. That's where we look for, like, all our locations where we want to grow and go in and do that, things like that. It's a pure vegetarian restaurant from start to end. No eggs, no meats, nothing like that. We've put together everything, passed through majority of our, all our licenses and everything. Now we're here seeking some blessings from you guys, like, hey, you're allowed to operate and come to the community and work with us.
Perfect. Thank you. I will open up to questions from the board. Select person Eldridge.
So it's fairly straightforward. I did notice from an entertainment standpoint, you do have radio slash stereo. Can you tell me what you envision there?
So basically, what we have planned is to just have some kind of light background music, nothing loud blaring or anything like that, just for entertainment purposes. So like, if people want to have a conversation and everything, there's just some soft music in the background. And in terms of TV, it's just, basically, it's going to be streaming anything that we have a subscription on, and the other TVs are going to just be displaying our images of the foods, that people can see what every dish looks like as they're sitting in there. Nothing major on the entertainment purposes.
Yeah.
Perfect. And for the, for the folks at home, exactly where is Unit 5? A lot of people know, some people know where 440 is, some people don't know where 440 is, but...
So...
Exactly where is it so that you can...
When we, when we pull in the driveway, I mean, when we pull in the plaza, it's on the right-hand side where the Dollar Tree and everything is, with the, talking to building inspector and the fire marshals, we were told we're not Unit A5. We have to change it to Unit A3, so we've put signs up there.
Okay.
With the restaurant name and the front and the back doors and everything, so it's very easily identifiable, and we've requested the landlords to be track, like, can you work with us and identify this, because last when I spoke to Paul, he said that try to get this squared away, because this has been a confusion for everybody.
Yeah.
From electricity company to gas company to everybody, so we're trying to go back and work with everybody, like, hey, can we identify as A3, not an A5?
Okay.
Based on that, is there any issue with the permit or anything like that? We're good with...
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you. No other questions. Select person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm thrilled about this. I watched your sign go up a few weeks ago, and I immediately texted Colin and said, "I haven't seen this Victular license come across, and I am ready for your Indian food." So, very excited to have you. Yeah, I think the point that you made about people usually ask north versus south, do you want to talk a little bit more about the style of food that you're going to be serving? This is sort of your opportunity to talk to our residents.
Absolutely, and I'll actually hand over the mic to Yash here, because he can speak to food a little bit more than I can, because he knows the recipes. He knows the food a little bit better than I do.
Perfect.
Yeah, hello, everyone. So this is the Choice Indian Restaurants, and they started the business since like 40 years back.
If you can get the microphone a little bit closer, then you can, everybody can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So the Choice Indian Restaurant is like a very old franchisee from the India. So they started their business since like 40 years back. Okay, so this is, this is going to be a third generation, the business. So their specialty is like they invented the Indian Gujarati food with the Italian food. So they, it's called the Bhakri pizza. So Bhakri is like crispy base of wheat, wheat base, and they mix the Indian taste and Italian taste pizza sauce on it, and we shredded the processed cheese on it. So it's the most popular item in a restaurant, and we, with that thing, we also added the North Indian curries with the tandoor items, garlic naans and rotis, and we have Indo-Chinese also, and we have also some famous street food from the, across the India. So it's the paan bhaji and pulao and vada pao and the water balls. So, yeah, that's it. And everything gonna be eggless, no meat, nothing. So everything are vegetarian, pure vegetarian. We also have some vegan items also, so which does not contain any dairy product also.
Perfect.
The one big thing is everything we cook is fresh from the ingredients. It's scratch up built. It's not that it's frozen. We're bringing it from elsewhere or anything like that. We pretty much cook everything ourselves.
Perfect.
And is it a full sit-down restaurant with waitstaff, or is it primarily ordering?
That's what we wanted, and then when we asked for our occupancy permit, we were permitted with 106 occupancy in there, and it's a full sit-down with the full service, like, we're going to serve with the waitstaff and everything like that.
And do you anticipate that you'll also use like a delivery service?
As of right now, we only want to focus with the dine-in and everything, and then once we get settled down, yes, we will have deliveries activated, but first couple months, we just want to make sure we take care of the customers, the team is trained, and we do it the right way for the right reasons. We don't want to rush into having all the platforms activated right away, because we want to make sure we can handle what we get in-house, so this way everybody's happy.
Perfect. I think this sounds wonderful, and I think that with the new temple that's being built, I think you're right. This is going to be a wonderful addition to the community.
And now, we're very excited to come to the town.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Select person Cohane.
I have no questions.
Select person Cofflin.
No questions. Welcome.
I have no further questions. I look forward to you opening and visiting your restaurant very frequently. It sounds, sounds great.
Yes.
And like, like, select person Gilfus says, I think you've hit it upon it at the right time, as temple is going to be coming onboard in the not-too-distant future. You'll have a great patronage from a lot of people. And it sounds like a unique Indian restaurant also. It's not like every other restaurant.
We own a few other restaurants in Salem, London area and everything, and what we found out is Indian food's becoming more and more popular with, across all the different ethnicities, and people like it. I've had, actually, we were working earlier when we had the health inspector in there, and a couple of people popped in, and they're like, hey, we're excited. When you guys are opening up, we want to kind of see an update. We gave them a tour of the facility and everything. They're super happy.
Nice.
On there. So, no, this would be very exciting for us as well, and hopefully we can see you guys all soon.
Yes, it'll be exciting for all of us. Thank you. Select person Eldridge.
I'm ready. Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve the application for a Common Victular weekday and Sunday entertainment for a TV and radio slash stereo licenses for Choice Indian Restaurant at 440 Middlesex Road, Unit A5 or A3, Tingsboro, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries. 500. Thank you, gentlemen. All the best of luck.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
I think she might be here for the Tavern in the Square. Do you want to take Tavern in the Square so she can get out of here?
Yes. Yes, we're going to go slightly out of order.
Nine B.
And go to item nine, be change of officers, ownership of interest application, Tavern in the Square, 440 Middlesex. Good evening.
Elizabeth Pisano from Upton, Connaught, and Devlin on behalf of Tavern in the Square. This application is to change the upper tier ownership of Tavern. They were acquired by Garnet Station Partners, so we are just going to every municipality where there is a tavern and changing the ownership. There's absolutely no change in the operations at the restaurant. The manager of record will remain the same, licensed entity staying the same. It is just a change of upper tier ownership and a change of officers. That's it. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Jackie, want to do it?
I'll give you my spiel, but she did a very, very good job this evening, so. Before the board tonight is a change of officers and change of ownership interest request from Tavern in the Square of Tingsboro LLC, 440 Middlesex Road, Tingsboro, Mass, to update the list of officers. The change of ownership interest is from Broadway Hospitality Group LLC to Tavern Holdings LLC, resulting from a change in the upper tier ownership structure due to the acquisition of Tavern in the Square chain by equity funds controlled by Garnet Station Partners. The ABCC was notified of this request in July. Due to the expansive nature of this transaction, they reviewed and determined that the transaction is consistent with the purposes of Masterful Law, Chapter 138, and would not result in individual corporate licenses being deemed to be out of compliance with the applicable statute. This request does not impact any other aspect of the license, including but not limited to ours, type of license, et cetera. Requests were comments from departments with jurisdiction had no adverse comments.
Select person Eldridge.
I have no questions. Fairly straightforward.
Person Gilfus.
I just love Tavern, like, top restaurant, so you're not anticipating any change to experience?
No.
I'm going to hold you to that.
You won't notice anything.
I really, okay. Thank you.
Select person Cohane.
Very straightforward. Thank you.
Select person Cofflin.
No.
And I have no questions either. It's just a change of ownership, so thank you very much for appearing before us.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve the change of officers and change of ownership interest requests from Tavern in the Square, Tingsboro LLC, located at 440 Middlesex Road, Tingsboro, Mass, as presented.
Assuming nothing changes. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? That carries. 500.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
You too.
All right, we'll back up now to item number seven, joint meeting with the Historical Commission.
Mr. Chair, we should check with Aggie. We didn't anticipate a continuation on Drakehead Water, so I didn't think we'd be this far along, and we told Historical that we'd start closer to seven, so if they're still expecting more people, we can close out a couple of the... Okay. So we can close out a couple of the remaining items if you'd like.
No worries. We don't have anything else to talk about, do we?
Item number eight.
Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am saddened to share that we were notified last week that State Senator Ed Kennedy passed away at the age of 74. Senator Kennedy was a longtime figure in Lowell politics, having served on the city council and as mayor. He was elected to the state senate in 2018 and has represented Tingsboro since. Senator Kennedy was a big advocate for Tingsboro and secured many earmarks and legislative wins for Tingsboro, including helping to move along our home rule petitions for the Town Manager Act, the DBW Act, and most recently, our home rule petition for liquor licenses. Senator Kennedy was very involved. He'd often call me to ask for input on earmarks, budget priorities, and to just check in. He was a dedicated public servant, and my thoughts were with his family and friends as they mourned his loss. I'm happy to report that the global ratings firm S&amp;P has reaffirmed Tingsboro's AA+ bond rating, which is the highest rating that we can obtain given our current budget size and amount in reserves. This is Tingsboro's seventh year with this rating and reflects a strong financial performance, management, and planning. Additionally, for our upcoming band sale, which this board will discuss later, they rated the transaction an SP1+, which is the highest transaction rating, and signals positive results to potential buyers. That no doubt helped us generate the best interest rate. Thanks to that, our interest rate that you'll vote on later is 3.5%. The last time we did a bond sale, it was 5%, so certainly much better news this time. Last week, we welcomed Secretary Ed Augustus of the Office of, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to Tingsboro for a meet and greet at the Tingsboro Housing Authority. We had a great conversation about the need for greater investment in local housing authorities and the need for state funding to close the public transportation gap that exists, particularly along Middlesex Road, which is home to Brinley Terrace. Thank you to the Housing Authority and their new executive director, Linda, for hosting the meeting and for the invite. On the grand front, I'm happy to report that the Tingsboro Police Department... On the grand front, I'm happy to report that the Tingsborough Police Department was awarded a municipal road safety grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security in the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. These funds will be used by the police department on a variety of safety-focused projects, including increased traffic patrols during peak hours. These types of specific patrols focus on distracted driving, speeding, OUI and other dangerous driving behavior, and allows us to put an additional officer on patrol specifically looking for these violations, whereas typically, we rely on a sector car that's also responding to calls for service. The town was also awarded sixty thousand dollars from Massachusetts Technology Park Corporation, otherwise known as Mass Tech Collaborative, as a part of our engagement with NIMCOG for their digital equity plan. This funding will allow us to purchase and install four desktop computer workstations, one quad privacy booth, and one ADA accessible privacy booth, as well as compatible furniture for workstations in the Tingsborough Public Library. It will also allow us to purchase eight new hotspots for the library's lending program, which will benefit members of our community with limited access or no access to the internet. A big thank you to our library staff and town planner and economic development director for their work on this application. From a staffing perspective, Chief Woods and I are happy to share that Hannah Gilbert joined the team as our co-response clinician, serving Tingsborough and Chelmsford. This position was created several years ago through a shared Department of Mental Health grant and continues to be grant-funded today. Hannah brings with her valuable experience as an outpatient mental health therapist, childcare worker and social worker in an adult day health center. This position serves as a critical role in delivering essential mental health services in times of crisis with first responders from our police and fire departments. And in the seven years that we've been doing it, it's been tremendously successful. It also allows us to follow up. Once a call is over, we rectify the immediate emergency. Having a co-response clinician allows us to follow up with people to make sure that they don't end up in crisis again. Our DBW is looking to fill two part-time vacancies. We're looking for a part-time labor in the cemetery division and a part-time custodian in our facilities division. Both jobs are posted at tingsbrowma.gov. An interested applicant should contact our human resources department for more information. On a project front, last week, we awarded a contract to Sunshine Paving for our roads phase two project. This is the full def reclamation work that's being done in the Elm Street neighborhood. The contractor is expected to mobilize on Monday. And so we'll get some of the work done this fall before the season ends. But as is typical for this re, re, reclamation work, it won't be fully completed till the end of next spring. And then just a few, a few events here. Bingo Night is back at the Center for Active Living on Wednesday this week. Doors open at five thirty and the game begins at six thirty. Also this week, the Council on Aging will host a Medicare planning event on Thursday, October ninth at six PM. No registration is required and all are welcome to join. Tiger Pride, which is the new version of the Tingsborough Athletics Booster Club, will host a charity flag football game on October seventeenth at Pierce Field to raise funds for Tingsborough Public School Athletics. At six PM, you can watch members of the Tingsborough Police and Fire Department face off against faculty from the Tingsborough Public Schools. And again, a hundred percent of the money they raise goes back into athletics. The Health Department will host a vaccine clinic here at Town Hall on Tuesday, October twenty-first from eleven to two. Residents should pre-register by visiting tingsbrowma.gov or calling the Health Department at nine seven eight, six four nine, twenty-three hundred, extension one one eight. The Sustainability Committee, the Tingsborough Public Library and the Tingsborough Dunstable Rotary will host a repair cafe on Saturday, October twenty-fifth from eleven AM to two PM at the Beehive at Two Bridge View Circle. Volunteers will help you repair your electronics, clothing, jewelry, bicycles, lamps, sewing machines and more. Zero Waste Day will take place on November first from nine AM to twelve PM. That will be at the elementary school. A reminder that the Town Hall and the Tingsborough Public Library will open late on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to accommodate our annual all-staff training. Town Hall will open at eleven AM and the library will open at eleven thirty. There are no schedule changes for the Center for Active Living. And then finally, this has been on here for a few weeks, but I'll keep reading it. The Tingsborough Public Library is playing an Oral History Day on Saturday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-six from ten AM to one PM at the library to collect oral histories related to the Winslow School. They'll be releasing more details in the coming months, but save the date. This project was funded by the Community Preservation Committee and approved by Town Meeting last fall.
Thank you.
That'll be it today.
I will open up to any questions from the board. Select person Eldridge.
Um, no questions. The only thing I would add, you know, Senator Kennedy, for a lot of folks, might not know that he was instrumental in getting additional funding for the middle school. When we started the project, there were unprecedented cost escalations that impacted a variety of schools, including us. And it was, I think it was four million dollars that we ended up getting, which is a huge deal for us. And difference between us being under budget, right? And, and being over budget. So Senator Kennedy was well-connected, had a long service to, to the area. And many people knew him. But he did certainly touch the folks here in Tingsborough directly. And it was great having him and Representative Gary here on a regular basis. Cause I think they, they genuinely care. And so he will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Select person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just echoing what select person Eldridge said, I didn't have a lot of time working with Senator Kennedy, but I was really impressed by how well he knew Tingsborough and really felt like he understood our community really intimately. And mentioned things that were very specific. It wasn't like he would make generalizations. That seemed like he was just kind of appeasing us. So I was always really impressed by that. And he wrote like personalized note cards. And he was a nice guy. So certainly a shame. And echoing Colin's remarks, just, you know, sorry for his family, for the loss. And I believe tomorrow are the services. The wake is tomorrow and then the funeral is on Wednesday. And I think some of us are gonna try to make it out to that. So. And the other thing that I would just note is, Colin, I'm really pleased to see the hiring of that co-response clinician. I think that that is really, really important for our community. And I'm thrilled to see that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Select person Cohane.
Yeah, I was very impressed with Senator Kennedy. I mean, clearly Lowell was, he needed the votes in Lowell to be elected. That's all he really needed. But it, that didn't really matter to him. He was always here. He was always calling us. Matt and Colin before him. He would personally call them if he had a question or he wanted to understand, you know, what type of earmarks we may need, what our priorities were. So I was very impressed how much he knew about Tingsborough. As you know, he came in front of the board every year. And we had a, we had a discussion with him and he followed up with us, you know, on those questions. So very impressed and very sad to see him go. Boston prayers go out.
And it's like person Coughlin.
Yeah, I had a question on the safety grant. And I don't suppose that we can out all the details. But like, would there be something around like the areas, like where the pot stores are? Cause I know that that is an area of concern for citizens and that. And so, I mean, I don't necessarily know if they have it all, the details all baked yet, but just curious as to what that is gonna entail.
Yeah. Middlesex Road has, even before the pot stores opened, that is our biggest crash area, largely due to the volume of traffic on Middlesex Road. So I'm probably underselling it. At least eighty percent of the, the enhanced traffic patrols that we do are along the Middlesex Road corridor. So they will certainly be focused on there. And again, the issue of traffic congestion and accidents on Middlesex Road certainly predates the pot stores. But the increased volume between that and the casino, people will see. We won't tell you when, but there will be enhanced patrols on Middlesex Road.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I have, I have no other questions, Colin. I can't add anything else about Senator Kennedy that you haven't already, that the board hasn't already mentioned. He was a kind and gentle man. And like I say, we'll miss him. So, thank you. Good report. What are you looking at? Oh, so quarter seven. Okay. Item nine A, rule of the nine point two million general obligation bond anticipation note.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to share that last week, we sold the nine point two million dollar general obligation ban for the items listed below and obtained an interest rate of three and a half percent, which is great and is lower than the five percent interest rate that we got on our fifty million dollar bond that we sold last year for the middle school project. The purpose for the bans is a gap borrowing on the middle school. As I've talked about with this committee before and folks that are on the school building committee know, there will be a period of time between when we close out the project locally and when the MSBA does its final audit and reimbursement. We still have to pay the contractor in the meantime. So this eight million dollars will cover our remaining share as well as that gap borrowing. And once the MSBA does their closeout, which can take up to two years, the proceeds from that will just pay off the ban, which is why it's a ban. Those are short-term. Last year, we did the fifty million bond. That's the thirty-year borrowing. These are typically for a year and then we renew them if we need to. Also included is the fire engine that we did a ban for last year. That was approved at fall town meeting for seven hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. And then the two new items, the fire station schematic design, which was approved at this most recent town meeting, as well as capital improvements to the exterior of the police department that was funded through the Capital Asset Management Program, totaling a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. The sale has occurred on the authorization of Town Meeting. You'll remember, all of these were approved by Town Meeting. What is happening tonight is that the select board is approving the sale to this specific entity at the three and a half percent interest rate. Hypothetically, you could say no. And we could try to go back out to the market and get a better rate. I don't think that that's realistic. For those who have been on the board before, you know that there's a really lengthy motion. Bond council has agreed that as long as you reference the motion, which is up on the board, you don't have to read the whole page of it.
Well, that kinda takes all the challenge out of it, doesn't it?
Sure does.
If you'd like, I'll read the whole thing.
Yeah, we've got some time to go.
All right. In the interest of time, let me just see if any of the board members have any questions. Select person Eldridge. No questions. You identified that this is already money that we've, Town Meeting has approved. So we're not spending additional money. We're just talking about how we finance it. I am still thrilled, as I was when you first told us, about the three point five percent interest rate. Cause I think that that's fantastic. I'm happy with that. And I think that that is, just shows why, you know, being fiscally responsible and making sure that we keep our house in order, we can get good financing rates. So I, I am, I am totally in favor of this, the way it is presented.
Thank you. Select person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colin, would you mind just explaining what we had talked about in terms of items that are going from one ban to another and why that would happen?
So the reason that you're seeing, for instance, the fire engine, which we've already paid for and received and is in service, is because a ban has a maturity date. We do one-year bans. So in a couple of weeks, the maturity on last year's ban will come due. So we have to either roll it into a new borrowing or pay the amount in full. Certainly, the budget doesn't contemplate a seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollar payment this year. What ends up happening, and we did this three times with the middle school, once you get to a point where you're prepared to do a longer-term borrowing, it makes more sense to roll it into a bond. But in this case, we just need to get us through the closeout of the MSBA. And then everything can be wrapped into, whether that's a new building, we're gonna talk later about a fire station, or incorporating it with the thirty-year bond. You wouldn't want to do a thirty-year bond, for instance, on your three hundred thousand dollar schematic design. That really doesn't make much sense. So the ban is a bond anticipation note. So it's in anticipation of a larger borrowing. We're not double borrowing. We're just making good on the debt that we took out last year for that seven nineteen and rolling it until we make a, a longer-term structured borrowing.
Thank you, Colin.
Great. Person Cohane.
No questions.
Select person Coughlin.
Yeah. So, so when and how does this get paid off? So is it in a year? Or, and does any of that funds get attached to the, the thirty-year loan bond?
It depends on how we structure it. I envision that it will be. I think one of the deciding factors will be if in the next year or two, we have another debt exclusion vote for, say, a new fire station, then we'd probably lump that in with that one. In the meantime, the benefit to a ban is that we are still paying down some of the, the principal. The bans allow you to delay the interest until you make a more permanent decision on how you're financing it. So the options will be, in a year, we'll be having this conversation again, whether we do another ban, depending on what we borrow, or if we decide to put this in with our fifty million dollar thirty-year note.
Got it. And, and then in terms of how did we, would it be rolling into if there was gonna be a new fire? I was like, that would be part of that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. You're basically playing the market until you think that it's a favorable time to lock in a longer-term borrowing.
Yeah.
At this amount, a thirty-year bond isn't super feasible unless we just said, we don't expect anything big. We'll just go with the middle school. But whereas there is a possible larger debt item on the table, it makes sense for us to just wait until we make a more firm decision.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I just have a question. And I don't even know if you can answer it. The three point five percent rate is a very favorable rate. Is there any way to quantify if we had had any, a, a lower bond rating, how much we would have, how much this is saving us now? Is it, is, is there any way to figure out?
I don't think I could quantify if you, certainly, we know that because of the two factors. So it's our bond rating and the transaction rating, the SP one. I think that it's probably been close to a decade since we had a lower transaction rating.
Yep.
I really wouldn't be able to break down the potential savings. Their analysis is a combination. The higher bond rating says to potential buyers that we're good for our money. You can trust that we'll be able to pay it. The transaction rating typically refers to, you know, results from previous borrowing, how often you participate in the market. And we've done a good job of mates, like staying in the markets that were relevant, but not overdoing it.
Yep.
Certainly though, I can say, we benefit because of these bond ratings and the transaction ratings. I don't think that I could give you a dollar amount.
I didn't expect you could. Thank you. Okay. And the only thing, Mr. Chair, just, just to be clear. So when we did the, the last bond, as favorable as it was, rates were still higher.
Yeah.
So one of the things, you know, kicking the can down the road. Theoretically, we can't anticipate the future, or at least know what the future is. But it is likely that this would be a better, a more favorable climate than it was a year, a year and a half ago.
Absolutely. Thank you. Select person Eldridge.
I would love to read the short version of this, which is, I move that the select board approve the bond sale as indicated in Bond Council's prepared motion as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that carries five zero zero. Thank you. Item nine C, ZBA request for comment, Taco Restaurant, four forty Middlesex Road.
Mr. Chair, the zoning board of appeals is requesting comments on the attached special permit application from Taco Restaurant for the installation of a second frontlit wall sign measuring forty inches by two hundred and ninety-two inches. The ZBA will meet to discuss this application on October ninth. As a side note, our office has been in contact with the applicant to work with them to obtain the necessary local and alcohol licenses they may need. We typically recommend that the board not comment on matters before other boards as to allow them the ability to do their own due diligence.
Thank you. We don't need to make a motion on this, or do we?
If you're not gonna make a comment, you don't have to make a motion.
Does anyone have a comment?
I, I just have a procedural question.
Sure.
The zoning board of appeals is requesting comments, but we don't make comments.
Usually.
Do they, are, are they obligated to ask us for comments?
Yeah, they send this to everyone, police, fire, building. I think that the board's longstanding position is that because you appoint these boards, you've basically said, you make the right decision. They could, I guess, since you never made comment, not send it to you. There have been very rare instances, but there have been some where the board has felt inclined to make a comment. But this is a standard request for comment that goes out to a handful of departments and a handful of boards and committees as well. We do the same thing when we get license applications.
Thank you. Okay. Item nine D, adopt change, fire station building committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attached to the memo is a draft of the charge for a fire station building committee. As the board is aware, we are days away from awarding a contract to a designer for the schematic design of a new fire department headquarters. Anytime a community undertakes a large building project, a building committee is generally appointed to manage the design and construction. This happened for the Tingsborough Middle School project and in a less formal way for the First Parish Meeting House. To that end, I put together a draft of the committee's charge based on examples from other communities that recently constructed new fire stations. You'll note that the charge proposes a nine-member committee that includes representatives from the select board, finance committee, fire department, town administration, DPW, which handles facilities, as well as two residents at large. If the board is good with the charges presented, I'd ask that the board adopt the charge tonight. We'll advertise tomorrow that we're seeking two residents and we'll present the letters of interest to the board at its meeting on October twentieth, where we'll ask you to appoint your representative as well as the two residents at large. You'll see that on the first page of the charge is the membership breakdown as well as the appointing authority. Since the town manager is the appointing authority for all staff positions, I'd be appointing the position, not the person. And the finance committee would appoint their own representative at their meeting on Wednesday night, again, assuming you adopt the charge. I shared the charge with. I shared the charge with Chief Russell before, last week, before it came before the select board. You know, the, the charge doesn't answer all of the questions because we're still in the early phase, we're in the schematic design. At any time, if the Fire Station Building Committee thought that it needed to amend the charge, it could come back to the select board for it. But to get us started, this is, I think, a, a very reasonable draft. And the only thing I'll note is that, as is traditional, this would be a body that is subject to the open meeting law, so we would post agendas in the same way that the middle school building committee does. We require to post meeting minutes and so on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask? Colin, knowing what, you know, the, the people that are on the school building committee and the, the time needed, the time spent by them for that, it's going to be something very similar. So maybe if you could just explain a little bit more in detail, so if citizens would like to do this, they would have an understanding of the, the time that it will take, that they'll need to put into this, and probably the meetings will be during business hours.
We, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be, depending on the makeup, obviously, we'd have to shift that. We would set the meeting times based on the availability of the committee. During the different phases of the project, the meeting frequencies would change. So in the schematic design phase, I think it's reasonable to assume that the committee would meet monthly. I think that when we get to the point where we're looking at the final design and certainly the construction, particularly on the construction, it may be more frequently than monthly. I think, you know, at the most, it'd be every two weeks. But it will be very much need-dependent. The school building committee meets monthly, and I think they've met monthly even throughout the construction, unless otherwise needed. But the, you know, I think that we would set the meetings based on the availability of the people that get appointed.
Oh, one more thing. You know, toward, toward the end of the, especially the design, they talked about possibly even once a week. The, the timeframe is, is a limited timeframe. So, you know, they would schedule once a week, they may not need it, but, you know, they thought, especially the last month, especially the last month or two, that it could possibly weekly or at a minimum every other week. Just so everybody knows what they're signing up for.
And if I, Mr. Chair, following up on that, would there be any time commitment outside of the meetings? Would there be any commitment for people to be doing work on their own between meetings?
I think someone who's serving on any board, it'd be expected that you review the material ahead of time. One of the things this talks about is as we get out of the schematic design phase, the next step is the public awareness campaign, because we'd be going before town meeting. So I do envision that that will involve things outside of a traditional meeting, whether it's, you know, tabling at community events so people have all the information, attending other board and committee meetings. Again, it's, it's going to be a team effort. Certainly, the staff that are assigned to it will put in a lot of the time. But so that everybody gets the same out of it and has the same input, I think there will be some flexibility required.
Yeah, just making sure that that's included in the posting tomorrow, assuming that we approve this.
Select person Coughlin, any questions?
No, I don't.
Select person Eldridge.
Nope. No questions, no additional questions.
Okay. Ask then for a motion.
Sure. I move that the select board adopt the Fire Station Building Committee charge as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Saying that carries five zero zero. Thank you very much. We are almost right at seven. How is that the timing, huh?
All right, why are we moving to, come on up. Get him seven. You want the whole committee?
Augie, we got seats for everyone. If they want to come up, and we have microphones.
Well, they want them, they want them, whatever.
They've got their spokesperson.
Yeah.
Come on, come on.
Any seat with a microphone is fair game.
Yeah. And Rony just asked, you don't move the microphone. Oh, he did. So I won't move it again.
Good evening. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and your address.
Warren Allgrove, Massapog Road.
If we could just go around to the rest of your numbers.
Marie Lambert, Middlesex Road.
Jill Bowen, River Road.
John Bowen, River Road.
Katherine Clark, Bancroft Street.
Adam Bastian, Bancroft Street.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So I guess you're supposed to start it off. That's the way I read it.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Augie.
Somebody's supposed to start it off.
Augie read the instructions.
Mr. Allois.
I can, I can fire off if you want, but hey.
No, no, I'm good. I got, I, I can start.
You will be ready.
All right. So as both of you saw, I sent identical emails with identical material to both boards. So I have a few slides, and then I'm going to kick it off to the boards to do the discussing. The, so goals for tonight's meeting is to understand the recent history around the exploration of the future of the Winslow School. Included in your packet is the presentation that this same committee gave to you in February of twenty twenty-five. Provide an update on the pending historical CPC request, and then to get direction from the select board regarding the pending fire department schematic design. So just that, everybody here is going to be intimately aware of the history, but for those that are watching at home, most recent Winslow School action, there was the two fifty Middlesex Road Strategic Visioning Committee, which delivered its final report to the select board in twenty twenty-three. That resulted in a town meeting vote in May of twenty twenty-three that allocated one point five million dollars from CPC funds with the intention of demolishing the additions to the school, restoring the original schoolhouse, relocating the original schoolhouse closer to Middlesex Road, and tilting it to face the bridge. In twenty twenty-four, shortly after I took over, we hired an architectural firm to do the cost estimates and the design that we would need for the bid docs. And when we did that, the cost to complete it came in, it exceeded what we had available by about six hundred thousand dollars. I made a presentation to both CPC and to the select board. Because there was no funding available, that project was stopped. In fall of twenty twenty-four, we completed a full abatement of the Winslow School. That abatement eliminated all the hazardous materials, but it left elements exposed, particularly on the outside of the building, because when that plan was first designed, the intention was to move right then into the one point five million dollar project that the CPC had approved and that town meeting voted on. In March of twenty twenty-five, the Historical Commission met with the Community Preservation Committee and made a presentation requesting the remaining roughly one point two five million dollars from that May twenty twenty-three vote to simply restore the entire exterior of the Winslow School. CPC at their meeting discussed wanting to see firm construction estimates as well as the scope of work, and so they authorized the use of twenty-two thousand dollars from their administrative expenses to hire an architecture firm to conduct a conditions assessment and provide the town with cost estimates to achieve the Historical Commission request. When I first made this presentation, we only had the conditions report, but as Historical has seen, select board and now CPC as well, basically, the next day, we got the cost estimates, which for the construction work alone was one point eight million dollars. That was included in the packet that's posted online tonight. In the meantime, town meeting in May of twenty twenty-four, our most recent town meeting, allocated three hundred thousand dollars for the design of a new fire station. And this select board, following work with Chief Russell and La Valley Brenzinger architects, had identified that two fifty Middlesex Road was the best parcel to construct a fire station on for a variety of reasons, its location in the center of town and the fact that we owned it. Going into the May town meeting, we knew that the fire station could be constructed on the site either in place of the existing Winslow School or on the backside of the parcel, assuming that the Winslow School stayed where it was. I anticipated that somebody would ask me about CPC's finances, and I didn't want to look like an idiot, so I included a slide that has their finances, but I won't spend too much time on it. What I will say is that in gen, in general, we receive about one point one million dollars a year in CPC funds. The state never really matches the same amount, so it's likely that it'll be a little bit more than one point one, but it really all depends on what the legislature does, and your guess about that is as good as mine. This is the balance that we show at town meeting, the fund balance. What is not included in here is the pending one point two seven five million for the Winslow School project. Because that money's already been allocated by CPC, it doesn't show up in an undesignated fund or in historic preservation. It's held for this project. As you saw at our last May town meeting, CPC has to vote to rescind the money, and then town meeting has to do the same. We most recently did this with that affordable housing unit. But that money is available to be re-appropriated, so I wanted to demonstrate that here. You'll also see that CPC still has two years remaining in debt for the Old Town Hall. That's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually, and five years remaining for the First Parish Meeting House. It's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand annually. That number, as we get closer to it being paid off, of course, will come down. But for the next few years, that's a relatively decent estimate. All right. So what does this have to do with the new fire station? In November of twenty twenty-four, the select board tasked me with working with both the police chief and the fire chief who's here tonight to identify the best parcel for a new fire station and a new police station. The priority was given to town-owned parcels, and we hired the architect firm La Valley Brenzinger to assess each of the preferred parcels to ensure that a building fitting the space program for our town would fit on the preferred site. Through that process, we decided that the Winslow School's parcel was identified as the best site for a new fire station because it was town-owned and because it was centrally located. As we've talked about before, and as the chief can better describe, unlike police which respond from sectors, the fire station is the only, the central station is the only manned station, so they have to respond from the building. And so having it centrally located ensures that there are decent response times to every part of town, whereas if it was in a place further away, you would extend those times. So from the beginning of our exploration of a public safety building, we've always said that the center of town is where the fire station needs to be. As I said, the architectural studies showed that the best location is in the place of the existing Winslow School, but could be accommodated on the backside of the parcel without touching the Winslow School. This is just the, the test site plan that La Valley Brenzinger and VHB did with us when we were looking at the different parcels. So where are we today? In May of twenty twenty-five, town meeting authorized three hundred thousand dollars for the schematic design of a new fire station. In August, we issued a request for qualifications, which is in Massachusetts, how you solicit a designer, and we began negotiations last week with our preferred designer. The RFQ included an option for the town to ask the designer to develop a second schematic design that incorporated the portion of the Winslow School that town meeting voted to save in twenty twenty-three. We are days away from being able to award a contract, but before I do that, I need to know if I'm awarding a contract to do a schematic design, assuming a new build, or if I'm asking them at an additional expense to build us a second schematic design. They will do either. It was included in our RFQ, but I need to let them know what they're doing before I sign the contract. During our winter twenty twenty-four exploration of the parcel with La Valley Brenzinger, they were clear that incorporating any part of the Winslow School into a new fire station would be challenging because in order to make it into a category four building, which is what a fire station has to be, you'd basically have to rebuild almost every element of it. It would add cost, and you wouldn't really be left with much of the original building. During the interviews, and Select person Kohane can talk more about this, he participated in them, the designer that we selected said that it was likely not a good idea, citing similar concerns. But of course, the designer will do whatever we ask them to do. Nothing is impossible in the world of construction. La Valley Brenzinger, which was also a finalist in this process, but did not, was not selected as our top choice, also doubled down on the concerns that they had expressed as a part of our twenty twenty-four exploration. So the only thing I need from the board tonight is direction on whether or not to, one, direct me to include a second schematic design of a fire station, including the original schoolhouse, or, B, direct the town manager to proceed with a schematic design of a completely new build. The completely new build, at this point, doesn't, for the, for the first several weeks of our project, won't require you to say where on the parcel it's going to go. But in full transparency, in order to get the most accurate cost, as this board voted at its goal-setting meeting in August, it's prioritized potentially having a town meeting vote as early as this May on a new fire station. And so in order to have the most accurate cost, at some point during this design, the architect will need to know where on the site it's going. And so that's going to mean that the discussion about what the future of the Winslow School is going to have to take place, and that's why I thought having a joint meeting with the Historical Commission at this phase and not after a decision made, is made, is best. But again, that's not tonight's issue. Tonight, before I award a contract, I simply need the board to direct me on how to proceed with the schematic design.
Thank you. Okay. You want to make some comments?
Oh, I got some comments.
I'm sure you do.
You ready? According to our latest master plan, seventy-one of the people responding felt top priority in the master plan was the historical town center. The Mass Historical Commission considered the Winslow School a, and playground important enough to be significant area and building and placed them on the National Register of Historic Places. This is the last piece of a historical land and building owned by Tingsborough. The building and area are significant because the people who went to school there became the leaders of the town, and that's what they take into account when they're doing a, to see if a building's significant for the Mass Historical. Because of its Mass Historical certificate, certification, we will be able to apply the grants for the playground and building. The town of Tingsborough is so named because of the Winslow School. That was the condition of taking the money to build the school. That's how we became Tingsborough from the Ting name. We were awarded matching grant money for painting, mortar repair, and slate roof on the Littlefield Library. So it's not a dream about taking, getting grants. Taking the information from the master plan and a survey done by the Historical Commission, the residents are ready for a community center. A community center, including a park bench, field setup for young parents and children with coffee shop and activities, would be a welcome addition to our town, including the, adding to the block party and festival of trees. Another use for Winslow, as there will be many, is we're an employment resource center, addressing space needs for this town hall, audiovisual studio, including a podcast booth, are some of the many ideas that people were interested in. Let's talk about putting the fire rescue station on the playground of the Winslow School. First recommendation from master plan was to work with Mass DOT on traffic calming measures in the town center. This doesn't mean adding an emergency vehicle depot into the mix. The highest number of vehicle crashes is the intersection of Kendall and Middlesex Road in town, according to the master plan, and from somebody living here, I'll kind of go with it. And I'm sure the chief would have to agree. And it's showing a continued increase. Growth of the neighboring communities of Chunsford, Drake, and Westford and Dunstville will continue to impact our bridge intersection on both e, east and west side, besides growth in Nashua and Hudson. When doing a feasibility study for a new bridge in two thousand and two, Department of Transportation estimated traffic flow would be twenty-three thousand, five hundred vehicles by year twenty twenty. We have passed that. Putting the driveway for a safety building into the uncontrolled traffic growth will be foolish. The driveway's part of the traffic jam, and trying to get a truck into traffic quickly would just create another accident-prone situation. Opticon does not vaporize autos. It tries to move them out of the way of the emergency vehicles. Autos in lines across the bridge have no place to go. You can empty the two southbound lanes, but autos and trucks in the, the lane to cross the bridge have no place to go. Trying to clear two intersections of the bridge, east and west side, is a nearly impossible task and time-consuming. The continued use of Winslow Road to cross the bridge causes an intersection gridlock that has no light signal to offer relief. The entrance to the property would need its own intersection light system, with a gas station across the street, a bank drive-through window exit, and the follow-all road intersection. It seems, no, not, but a problem will always exist and get worse over time. This isn't, this problem won't go away. Putting this, putting the fire station there will create a situ, a, a, a traffic problem that'll be passed from board to board, and nobody will be able to solve it because you just can't make the cars vaporize. It would certainly have a negative effect on the businesses. I was on the I was on the committee to build a new fire station in the nineties. At that time, a new bridge to cross over from Petuka Boulevard to Westford Road was in the works. Obviously, this did not happen. The decision was to put an addition on Station One until the outcome of the new bridge was known. And at, and at that time, we didn't know. But we do now. Having a pretty even split of population in the town with three schools on both sides, the need for a respawn time becomes a major issue. We knew the traffic was a major concern, and a new bridge would mean one station. But without the new bridge, location of a new fire station would be more critical. Considering that the stations to, considering that Station Two usefulness has been a question for quite some time, the coverage of the east side comes into question. No matter how large the station is and how many trucks you have, there are, they are no good if they can't get across the bridge. Think how little it takes to stop traffic. One stalled truck, one accident, no electricity for the traffic signals, and now protests where people chain themselves together. Will that happen? We hope not. But those are things that have become everyday occurrences for us. There are thoughts that this land would be free, that's why it looks so good. The truth is, the cost of bringing the playground to the level of Middlesex Road with Phil would probably get close to a hundred thousand dollars just to start. So you, you, cost overrun is built in. Intersection, intersection lights would be needed for the driveway and Middlesex Road and follow. I don't remember what we spent at Norris and Frost, but I believe it was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I could be wrong, but it was up near there someplace. This location will be a continuing problem due to its location. The spending to this town to try and solve tra, the traffic will be a nightmare. Will never end. Both sides of the towns deserve equal coverage and not have to worry about the intersection at the bridge, the bridge determining life or death. And it is life or death, because I've used them twice. Wes has taken me to two heart attacks, they do a really good job. The only way to guarantee coverage to the east side is for the new station to be built on the east side. It would not limit trucks, equipment, and men if the bridge was open to the east and west side. So if you've got trucks on both sides and people on both sides, and they need more trucks, ninety percent of the time, they would have that ability to go back and forth. But if the bridge is blocked, you would still have a, a, a division on the east side and the west side. The, the Historical Committee started the revitalization of the town center in nineteen ninety-nine, has been setting the stage for the Winslow to be the final piece of the town center. And is the natural end of the project of our town center revitalization. The thing I keep hearing about was the last town meeting was that the town voted to save the original two rooms of the Winslow. What the people voted for was the only option on town warrant to save the school. Doing nothing or putting the school in a dumpster were the only other options. That warrant article was not supported by the Historical Commission, and I believe the Board of Selectmen purposely set the stage for failure. The Historical Commission opposes the location and opposes any change to the Winslow property until spring town meeting. And if you've got any questions, shoot.
I will have the questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think that we should avail ourselves, the chief is here. I, I think that.
I think that would be a great idea.
I should welcome the chief to, to come on up, because I, some of the questions I have, I think he may be, he's the professional to answer some of the questions relative to that.
Hey Wes, how's it going?
Did you feel my eyes in your back?
I mean, I, I guess my first question would be.
Do we know each other?
I think you guys have met. Chief, your thoughts on this, I know there'll be other questions that come up, but I, I didn't know. You know, one of the things that we got into was fitness of the location and, and safety items, things that you're best suited to, to answer in addition to, to the folks that we've, that we commissioned on this, so. I'd love to hear what your thoughts are.
Yeah, but first of all, my thoughts are that the Historical Commission has done a fantastic job with what they've done with the center of town. And I grew up in Tingsborough and went through the school system, and I greatly appreciate the work you guys have done. And I think it's very important for the town to recognize that culture and to, and to preserve as much of it as we can. So I empathize with the challenges here tonight. You know, regarding the location of the fire station is something that, you know, I've certainly been thinking about since day one, being appointed fire chief. And in the previous thirty-five years on the fire department, it certainly has been something I've thought about over the last, you know, twenty years or so anyway. And I'll, I'll just clarify on a few points, and I certainly am not a traffic expert, but in my career as a paramedic throughout the greater Lowell area and as a firefighter in a town in Tingsborough for over forty years, I certainly have a lot of experience with emergency vehicles getting through traffic. To start off with, our current situation is about as bad as it gets with the traffic at the, the Middlesex Road Kendall intersection. The west, excuse me, the eastbound traffic on one thirteen backs up every morning, and seems to be backing up every, earlier every afternoon. I was going to say, you know, four o'clock, four-thirty, now at three o'clock, it seems like we can't get out. So we're, we're constantly being blocked by traffic in queue, waiting for the lights to change. People have to maneuver to get out of our way if we're coming out of the, the pad now to get across the bridge. So I, I, I really think that, you know, the situation will only improve by a move to the, the Winslow site on Middlesex Road. The, we would be coming out onto a, a larger road where there's more room for traffic to get out of the way. Certainly, we would have to incorporate some kind of traffic controls, and we would rely on the expertise of, you know, the architects, people from, I'm assuming, Department of Transportation to advise us on those. What I envision is not a working control that's working all the time, but something that would be triggered by the fire apparatus to stop traffic when we are coming out for an emergency. That would also be able to trigger the intersection lights. And the opticons, although they don't vaporize crowds, sometimes we wish they would. And when they are working, you know, work pretty well. What they do is, when we trip the opticom on the traffic light, all of the other traffic gets a red light, and the lane that we're in gets a green light. So we trip it hopefully long before we get to the intersection or soon, you know, probably ten or fifteen seconds before we're going to get to the intersection. So the traffic in front of us gets to clear out of the intersection before we come through. That's our best tool right now, and, and when it is working, it works at, at that intersection for us. I anticipate those are the kind of tools that we would need to use. And I am very confident that our, the traffic situation for us responding would be better than it is, certainly much better than it is now from our current location. I don't think that we're going to contribute to traffic jams in that intersection any more than we do now. Certainly, whenever we trip the opticons, you know, somebody's going to be waiting at a light for a long time, that, that line is going to build up a little bit more. It happens at every intersection throughout the country when emergency vehicles go through. Regarding the, you know, concept about having a station on the east side, I have always been of the opinion that it is critical that we have a fire station on both sides of the river. One on the east side and, and one on the west side. And I think, you know, the, the headquarters station being the only currently manned station, and certainly for the foreseeable future, it's important that that's on the west side of the river. Fifty-five percent of our calls are on this side of the river. The highway, you know, is on this side of the river, Middlesex Road gets us to a lot of areas in town. You know, a smaller, you know, less than half of the calls are on the other side of the river. And what, what I will say is, I'm far more confident in our ability to get across the bridge moving east in an emergency situation than I am coming west. The way they designed the intersection at Cronopolis and Frost and the Boulevard, there's no way for traffic to get out of the way. It's extremely challenging when we happen to be on that side of the river and get a call to, to come the other way. We have a lot of challenges coming, coming westbound in an emergency situation, especially during those heavy traffic times. And these are all things that I think about all the time for years, you know, it's just like, I spend a lot of time thinking about these things. So I've committed to, you know, to calling, and some of the longer-terming Select Board members have heard me say, previous town administrator, town manager, it's critical that we have an east side fire station as well for the people that live on the east side. But the headquarters station, I'm confident, needs to be on the west side of the river, somewhere near the center of town. The only other thing, I'll, I'll, well, I guess I'll just leave it at that for now. I can't think if there was, if there's other questions. I'm not sure if I answered all of the points that Augie brought up about the location of the fire station. You know, the answers about the Winslow School are certainly a lot more challenging. I will tell you that the need for a fire station is critical. This is a, this is an emergency need for the community to replace the existing fire station with one that is not only large enough for a modern apparatus, designed to house firefighters in the, in the space that we need to eat. Two independent architects, six years apart, came up with the same space needs based on looking at our situation. And that's four times the size of our current center station. And even more importantly, it's critical that we do provide a station that provides protections for the health and welfare of the firefighters that have to stay there in between calls and on a twenty-four hour basis, potentially being exposed to contaminants. This is a huge issue in the fire industry now, and, and it's, which is why we're one of the last communities to go from still using what was an old hall fire department station, which is only meant to house vehicles, to building a new station that is meant to house firefighters. We've never done that in this town. You know, almost every other community you can drive through has built a new fire station designed to house firefighters. And I think we're putting our firefighters' health and safety at risk in the station, you know, as, as well as the risk, you know, of face when they, when we leave the station. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that was, that was fantastic. That was exactly what I was looking for, and I'm sure there'll be other things.
Yes.
But some other questions, I guess for the Historical Commission. So I, I totally agree with, actually with, with both sides, right? We sit there and say, we've got a critical issue right now. And, and I would say it's an emergency situation with, with the fire department and that building. I worry about the safety of, of the folks. I, I worry about it all the time. I sit there and say, it, it's not a good situation, and it's become critical. I worry about the equipment. I worry about their ability to do the job. I worry about their ability to attract and retain firefighters who are going to have to work in that type of environment. I also understand that building and that entire area, it has tremendous historical value. I think the challenge is, we've got, we've got the Littlefield Library that, that's there, and that's not going the way. We're not talking about any of that. You know, we obviously have First Parish Meeting House and the Old Town Hall. Fantastic, I think, all those items that are there. I guess the question is, what is the Historical Commission willing to look at in order to preserve the memory of Winslow School? And trying to balance that with the challenges that we've got near term? Because I've said it here, and I've said it multiple times before. I wish that we had unlimited funds and that we could go through and address the, the challenges of the last twenty-five years to not have done anything with that building so that, you know, we might have more options in there. But here we are today, and we've got a critical need. We've got very, very limited funds. And, and we don't have the funds to go through and do everything that we would like to do with that building. What would the Historical Commission do short of, or be willing to do short of an entire preservation of that building?
The money for the, the money that we get every year from the CPC is, that was the point of CPC. Buy property, do some public housing, and save our historical. We've done a very good job in this town of it. And the work that goes into our projects is, is not all our town money. There is matching, which we all are aware of. The Historical Board wants to save the whole Winslow. We never, we, we never agreed or asked about that town warrant that was put out. And that wasn't right. So when I keep hearing that that was the only option, was to keep those two, the reason that you had so much, so much, so much anger from the residents that got up and spoke at that town meeting was because that was not what they wanted. And Jack, you were on that committee, and that committee met after the last meeting, which you brought cookies in from your wife, and that was the last meeting. But that wasn't the last meeting. They had another meeting. And I couldn't make it, Jill couldn't make it, and it, and it changed the vote. And that was not right, because we would have made sure we were there if in fact we knew there was going to be another meeting. But we did have the last meeting. So that's how that ended up on that warrant. It was not right, and it was incorrect. And the Historical Board did not agree to that in any way. But the people saw it through. I, I almost fell over backwards myself. Spend nothing and do nothing? Spend fifty thousand dollars and put the whole building in a dumpster? Or take a one point five, or six, or seven, and rotate it and do crazy things to it? That was the only option they had. So for anybody in this room to think that just because that was what was said or, or what was wanted is not true. It was the only option to keep it. Wes, Wes and I, I've been on, I was on the fire department, we're a little age difference before Wes was around. He was kind, he kind of came in when I was kind of getting out, and it was still all volunteer. And it's a whole new world down there. I don't deny that. But I've never, I don't want anybody here to think that I'm anti-fire station. I'm not. I am for that, for a fire station. I realize it needs to be done. I realized it in nineteen ninety, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, and I was appointed to the committee to get a station started. And I explained that at that time, we, we actually had the plans to put the bridge across the Boulevard from what's now Cronopolis Way to Westford Road. Those plans were there. But things like that in the state of Massachusetts just go away. But what that did was, when we were having our meetings, we knew, and just like Wes said, do I call you the chief now? Just like the chief said, we were always, it, it was always a need for a, a new station too. So that was the talk of where would we, if we were doing a new station, it would be over there. But that couldn't happen until we knew if the bridge was going to happen. And when the bridge didn't happen, and, and until the bridge happened, we had to do some. And when the bridge didn't happen, and, and until the bridge happened, we had to do something. So that was when we were starting to get, uh, firemen that stayed, full-time firemen and all that. It was just, it was the first change that was coming. So at that time, Chief Madden and the building committee decided that the best thing to do was expand that station to make it useful and to carry us to what is now, I guess, this point. But of course, like everything else, the, the school, the, the school came in, other projects came in, the elementary school, and all these projects came in. And again, that's how we always end up here in a mess. So that's a little history on that. But I don't want you to think that, that I'm not for the fire station. When we got our first ladder truck, it came with a bad motor. And my business got the motor, did all the labor, got the motor out, brought it to, to Worcester, motor was rebuilt there, brought it back. We installed it at no cost, because we were part of the fire department. We have, we felt the community, that was what the need was. The community didn't buy the fire truck, the association did. And that was our donation to the fire department. When their generator went down, my business, we went down there, we replaced the motor, got the generator back up and running, and we did it in short time. So I'm not looking for a pat in the back. I know Wes doesn't know, knows I don't hate the fire department or have any ill feelings towards it. But I don't want, that, 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 uh, that was somebody said that to me, so that's, that's an awful thing to, to put out there. I don't think that we can solve the traffic problem in the center of town with op coms. I don't think that you can, I don't think that I, you and I have been on the bridge together when there's an accident. You can't get across the bridge. I've lived through two bridge closings that were more than a couple of days long. One, we had the temporary bridge put up for it, and the other one, we didn't. And we had to drive to Hudson to get, to get to the other side of the river or down to Lowell for the road, bridge. During that period of time, Station 2 was used, obviously. Um, a lot of accommodations had to be made, and it was done, and we all got through it in town. Will that happen again? I don't see a new bridge. I don't see plans for a new bridge. I don't see anything. We have a two-lane bridge that if a tractor trailer truck blows its motor and is there for five hours, that's the way it is until it gets towed off. You can't get past that. You just can't. You can't get past the fact that that bridge is only two lanes, and you can't get through it if, if there's an accident or anything else. You can't, I mean, you, you think you have a traffic problem at the new marijuana places? You can't get that, that, that's, that's having a problem getting solved. And I get it, Wes. I feel, I, 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 I mean, I understand where you're sitting, but the problem in front of the, in front of the Kendall Road Station is gonna move to Middlesex Road. I don't see how you figure that changes. When the cars are down there, yeah, the lights get turned red, but the traffic has no ways to go. It, it, in the left lane, if you come out of Winslow, you take a right, the cars that are backed up on Wins, Winslow Road, which is actually not Winslow Road, I, I just gotta bring that up, it's actually Thomas.
Thomas.
But goes down to Winslow Road, those cars are all backed up? The cars that get the, the south lane is the most traveled lane according to the master plan. And 88 accidents a year occur in that intersection. That's according to the master. You, you get out of there, and if, I get what you want, but you can't get out of the driveway if this car's there. And we've both been in accident scenes down there where it's a gridlock between fire trucks, cruisers, and smashed vehicles. You, you, you can't, you can't get across. And if it's on the other side of the river, and it's that bad, the, the traffic has no ways to go. We're absolutely sitting here making believe that you can get, that you can solve the gridlock problem with some sets of lights and a, and a, and a system that'll make the lights turn for you. It doesn't, it, it doesn't work that way. We're only, this is 2025. I imagine if we build a nice station, you would think that we got 65 years out of the one on Kendall Road, we should be able to get 75 out of a new one. You and I won't care. So, so, you know, to, to sit here and make believe that you can get fire trucks through the intersections when there's cars everywhere and trucks, and there's gonna be more, we're building, what, what's that thing we're building up on Kendall Road? You think the traffic's all gonna go to Route 3? No, it's gonna be coming down Kendall Road. When Chelmsford had this problem, they moved the station a half a mile, se, almost a mile away from where it was from the center, because of what the problem that the chief has. The fire guys gotta get out, they gotta stop the traffic, they gotta move cars. They're supposed, they're not supposed to be out in traffic playing cop. You, you, you know, you can keep fighting to put the sta, the, the, the station on that piece of property, cause it's free. And that sounds good, but it's not gonna be free. This town is gonna spend hundreds and thousands of dollars to try to figure out what to do with this, what to, how to get fire trucks out. And I agree, when you're in a fire truck and you got the lights going and the whistle going, yep, a lot of people move out of your way. But we've all sat at the intersection with people who are now watching their phones and wouldn't know if a helicopter landed in the intersection. This just doesn't make any sense, and you can't make it sense. If you have to build a station on, if you're gonna spend 20, was it, that's 20 million dollars? I don't know, 20 million dollars for a good station? If you're gonna do that, and you're gonna, and you're gonna tell me that it's gonna be able to service both sides of the, this town, I don't believe, I don't believe it. And if you take all these intersections, and you include the gas station across the street who's gonna have it, it's gonna impact his business. You have the bank that has the people coming out. You have Fallow Road, you have the beginning of Winslow Road, as everybody loves to call it, and the main intersection. Are you kidding me? You, that's where you're gonna put the outlet or the inlet, but mostly the outlet for fire trucks and ambulances to go out? Those aren't Honda Civics squeezing into. They're 35-foot trucks. They're eight and a half feet wide. So I don't know how anybody can sit here and say that you can make it work, and when traffic, as traffic increases and the bridge size doesn't, that you can say in 10 years that's, that's gonna be a good idea. It's not. I just don't see how you can, how you can sit here and deny the obvious. You just can't.
Mr. Chair, I don't know that I got my question answered.
I don't think so, but try again.
Is the historical commission, what are you, is there anything, is it, the school has to stay as is complete and complete refurbish or nothing? I'm trying to understand, what, what, what is the stance?
The historical commission opposes the location of the firehouse, and we do plan on asking to rebuild the Winslow School for use as a community center.
Okay, that, that's what I needed to know. And, and Chief, question for you. Right now, you have to go over the bridge, right, with your apparatus? Are you anticipating a large number of additional apparatus going through? Are we gonna have somehow more on this? I'm trying to understand the traffic concerns around the fire department and that station. Totally understand questions around traffic in that area. My concern would be if I have a community center and all the other things that, that you're talking about, wouldn't that then also add to the traffic at that bridge where, regardless of whether the station were a half a mile down the road or whether it was right there, it's still gonna have a problem getting over that bridge?
I, I would just say that, uh, I stand by my assessment and, you know, my years of experience with emergency vehicles in traffic. I'm willing to listen to any traffic expert's opinions on how that might work. Uh, I'm confident that the situation on Middlesex Road, where it's a much larger road and there's more room for traffic to move out of our way. You know, we activate those controls at the intersection now as we're leaving the top of the, the hill, and traffic stops, traffic clears out. So we're not gonna make the congestion worse, we're not gonna make the congestion better. It's always gonna be there. It's important that we have the ability to use those tools to open up our lane so that we can get through, which we do on a daily basis. And again, right now, the traffic is so bad on 113 that we, they literally have to get out and have cars move, push aside so we can just get, get out of the bay. So I, I stand by that. I'm confident, uh, that, uh, everything I had described before in what I, in what I said. And I guess I just, you know, I certainly emphasize with the, um, the work that the, uh, historical committee has done, and I guess, you know, they, like the rest of the community, need to consider what, you know, we don't have a lot of other options for building a fire station. And I'm telling you that we're at a critical emergency situation with what's happening in our fire station. Would love to, you know, invite you to come and, and take a walk through the fire station and ask questions and so you can understand what we're trying to do. But, you know, uh, it's unfortunate that our fire station needs are conflicting with what we wanna do with the, the historical federation of the town. I'm just not sure we can do anything about that.
Mr. Chief, I could just quickly.
Yes.
Although the chief's word would certainly be enough for me, this isn't like we just threw a dart at a parcel and said this works. The select board authorized the use of the remaining ARPA funds. We worked with an architect who had on contract a traffic engineer. So we, none of the, it won't stop people from coming down Middlesex Road, for sure. Augie's totally correct about that. But I just don't want people at home to think that we just said, oh, this is a free parcel that we have. We met multiple times with La Valley Brenzinger. VHB, which included the drawing in here, is their traffic engineer that's on call. So we tested this site, and I know nothing about building buildings, so I don't opine on it. But between the chief's opinion and the architect, we know that they say, you know, La Valley Brenzinger has built dozens of fire stations just in the last several years, that that parcel works. So just for people at home, it wasn't just the chief and I driving around saying, this looks like a good parcel. We did spend, uh, money to hire an architecture firm.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm sure I have other questions and comments, but I've deferred everybody else.
Sorry, it's like person gilfus. Questions, comments?
I hate talking about Winslow, because it is, it is so emotional for everyone involved. And Augie and Jill and I served on the 250 Middlesex Road Committee, and I've talked about this before in select board meetings and in other meetings, that I went into that committee feeling very neutral, but sort of leaning on the idea that we would tear down the school. I kind of imagined that based on the conditions. And by the time we left that committee, I had really changed my opinion of that space and really believed that the community wanted to save it in some capacity. And so I was an advocate for maintaining Winslow. And I think, um, you know, it's been two years, right, since we did the vote, was that 2023? And I think it's unfortunate that in so many ways, like, we're not actually closer than we were three years ago when we started the committee. I don't know, it's a lose-lose. I mean, I, I think that Chief Russell raises an important point that I think it's non-negotiable, we need a fire station. I, I think that's something that the select board has agreed to, and that's a goal for all of us. To Colin's point, we did our due diligence. I can't remember how many, and of course, call him out there, but, um, I don't remember how many parcels we evaluated. Do you remember?
Half dozen, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember seeing the report and looking at all of them and really trying to weigh out what made sense. And I was surprised and disappointed to see that the recommend, the recommended parcel was Winslow, because I knew that that was going to cause a lot of distress in the community again. I have been advocating for having this, a second schematic design include the building or include design that maintains some degree of historical significance or, um, I believe that there's something that needs to happen there that involves Winslow, even if we do build on that site. The thing that I keep coming back to, and I, unfortunately, I, I reflect on this a lot, the same way that I think this keeps Wes up at night for safety region, reasons, it keeps me up at night for, I think, historical and community reasons. From what I remember hearing from residents when we were on the committee, and I, Jill and Augie, I want you to hold me to this, there certainly was interest in maintaining the building. But even when we talked to residents and we said, you know, the costs associated with this are probably something that's going to be outside of the comfort and appetite of the community. I remember hearing people say that really the thing that we want, the thing that we yearn for, and I think this was also what you were describing in the master plan, Augie, the goal is to have a charming New England historic town center. In the same way that when you drive around to neighboring communities, I think about like Westford, when you drive through, like, there's this New England charm that you get. And I think we are starting, we're starting to feel that more in our town center with the work that's been done on the First Parish and Old Town Hall. And I think you're right, Augie, that it feels like the natural next or last stop is making something of Winslow. I wonder if, if we were really intentional about the design of the firehouse, being complimentary to a New England town center look and feel, having that New England charm captured in the design. Do you believe, obviously this doesn't solve for the historic significance of the physical building, but do you believe that that would satisfy residents and their desire to keep that in the town center? If we, if we needed to tear down Winslow, but build on the site and keep the historic integrity of the design, do you think that that would satisfy residents, based on what we heard on our committee work? Could you talk more about it, Jill? Do you mind?
Yes. I do com, uh, completely agree, we need a fire station. That is, they, we have a great fire department, and we def, we need a fire, uh, a fire station, absolutely. I just obviously wish it was a different parcel. I, I mean, I didn't pay attention to the ones that you had. I mean, I can, my head can think of a few. But the, like you said, like, um, I wanted to point that out. You go to any town around here, and they care about their his, historical buildings.
Yeah.
They, they don't rip them down. Here, it's just like, I mean, I know, I, I have said before, um, about, you know, like, granted, it, it's important to me, I'm the fourth generation of my family, I have other family members, a fifth generation of my family that's in this town. How important it is to keep our history. This is our Tinsborough. Tinsborough's history. This was, um, uh, uh, named after the woman that gave the money to build that, to have our Winslow School. I think it's a shame. I think it's just horrible, 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 that you would even consider taking a building like this down. Again, we do need a fire station, and I, I liked how you said about, um, making a, And I liked how you said about making a New England charm of the fire station. I mean, I'd like to see, like you said, they have to, you could either do it with keeping the Winslow School. Why can't we look at that? Like, why, you know, like, that's, the Winslow School is important to this town.
Yeah, and I don't want to speak for Colin, but I certainly will direct to him. I think the options on the table are a design that does not, that doesn't try to save Winslow, but also doesn't touch Winslow, right? Like, it could just be a standalone building. Or having a design that actually incorporates physical pieces of Winslow in the design of the fire station, correct? Like, theoretically, like, the administrative offices or something. But either way, you wouldn't be able to leave Winslow in the, I don't want to say in the condition that it is, because obviously you couldn't do that. But like, it's, renovating Winslow as a standalone and using Winslow as part of the fire station have very significantly different costs, right? Because it needs to be up to that certain code zoning that you were describing.
The only yes and yes and sort of no. The only direction I need from the board tonight is whether or not, Jill is correct, the fire station, we had the valley test, could fit, albeit in full transparency, be less than ideal in the backside of the parcel, without touching the Winslow School, period. That's not, that's not the conversation for tonight. Because there was this town meeting vote, and I won't dispute Augie's description of the vote, because there was a town meeting vote that said, save just the original part, we included an option in the design contract that I intend to award tomorrow, based on direction from the board tonight, to have them do a schematic design of a complete new build. Now, at this phase, that could be where the Winslow School is or it could be in the very back of the building, or the back of the parcel, without touching the Winslow School, period.
Wouldn't those be two different designs, though?
Not at this phase. As I, so,
Carry on.
The other design option is to have them prepare a second schematic design at an additional fee that contemplates using the original schoolhouse. So you would demo the additions and use the original schoolhouse where it sits and build the rest of the fire station off of it. That's the decision that I need the board to make tonight. The next thing that I, the last slide and what I kind of talked about at the beginning, is that at some point, to get the best cost estimate, doesn't have to be final, but to get the best cost estimate, I do need the board to direct me as to whether or not your ultimate intention is to put it in place of the existing Winslow School if we're going with a completely new build or in the backside of the parcel, because there will be cost implications. And as the board voted in August, you, the board directed me to do this so that we could potentially vote on it at a May town meeting the earliest. You want to go to town meeting with the most accurate cost. So if we don't tell the designer, that's fine. The schematic design would be altered in the final design phase, which would follow a town meeting vote, but we just won't have the most accurate number. We would have to ballpark it to town meeting, and that's really not the best. So there is, if you were in the camp where you didn't want to touch, you don't want to demo the additions, you don't want to use just the original schoolhouse, then the direction tonight is for me to proceed with the schematic design of a new build. Tonight, I'm not asking you to tell me where on the parcel you're putting it. It's going to take the designer several weeks to get to the point where where it's sitting on the parcel matters. And that's why the last slide says that in the next four to six weeks, I will need you. And again, if you voted at your November 3 meeting that ideally you put it where the Winslow School is, on November 4, the Winslow School doesn't come down. Town meeting still needs to allocate the funding, whether that's as a part of the overall building project or as a separate item. But for the purpose of tonight's meeting, I just need to know, and I've met with Augie many times, so I think I know where Augie stands on this, if there's a desire to include any part of the Winslow School in a new design. That's all I need from the board tonight.
Thank you. And I think that comes back to the point that maybe I was trying to make, but unsuccessfully, which is I'm trying to gauge if it's the physical building that would be most critical as part of that design or the essence of it in the design. Like, if we tore down Winslow, but the facade of the firehouse looked like the Winslow School, if it looked like a schoolhouse. So that's why I'm asking. So that's what I'm trying to understand. Because I felt like what I heard from residents is that they wanted the look and feel of a New England town center, not necessarily the physical building that stood there. So that was sort of where I was going. And Augie, maybe, do you remember from the conversations that we had? This was now, a while ago.
I have no desire, and I don't believe the board does, the commission, to lose any part of the Winslow School. That Winslow School is a useful building, and that's where you could have a normal community center like most towns have. It's already there. We don't have to raise the taxes, we just have to use the community funds.
Okay, so it sounds actually like you agree that the design should be a new build, then? That really trying to repurpose the Winslow School to be part of the firehouse also wouldn't meet your desire, right?
That doesn't make any sense either, because it would cost more.
Then that, okay, well, I think that's ultimately the question that we need to answer, so that's helpful.
I want no part of that Winslow School to be gone.
I hear you.
I want to rehab the whole thing, make it a community center. And when I say I, I mean as the group.
Does the rest of the board. Yeah, please.
It makes no sense to build a fire station and try to bring it all building up to code. I don't agree the fire station should be there. But besides that, sense is, I don't want to see the money that would be spent to try to bring the Winslow School into the code system of the fire department.
I think that's the short answer that we,
The short answer is if you guys, let us, let us fight for the Winslow.
Separate from that, yeah.
And go, you don't want to be any part of it truly anyways. And we don't want you there, so there's an agreement.
Yeah.
So.
Do you mind if we turn to, I know that you had comments also, right?
Yes, I do.
Augie, do you mind if I? Is it okay if she speaks?
People have read for me enough over the years.
I'm gonna shut your mic off.
There may be another comment back there.
So I'd like to talk a little bit about Tinsborough history. I'd like to start by saying that I can probably count, in one hand, the legments throughout the 30, almost 40 years that I've been here in Tinsborough, that have actually supported the historical commission and been interested in retaining the history, the heritage of Tinsborough. So I will start with the Tinsborough failure to protect its heritage. And I have a list of buildings here that could have made the corridor of Tinsborough, Middlesex Road into a very charming New England community. The first one to go was the Train Depot, was right across from the Sullivan's Ice Cream Place. The second one to go was the Tin Mansion, which belonged to the family who actually started Tinsborough. And then, of course, the original Winslow Academy, which was just one room building, known now as the Little Red Schoolhouse, which Tinsborough was badly eager to get rid of it and ended up in Dunstable, Dunstable, all the time. So now, let's go to the failure to preserve the buildings. We all agree that Old Town Hall is a beautiful building now. Many people use it. But it was pretty much abandoned and many people wanted to destroy it because they said, oh, it was, it had termites, it was gonna cost way too much money. Back then, I was the chairman of the historical commission. I used to get phone calls, 7:30 in the morning. People wanting to know, why don't we tear that building? It's full of termites. It's not worth saving it. So the town did not make an effort to maintain the building throughout its life. We tried, and of course, now, look at it. We have a beautiful building, right? It adds to the center of town. The next one was the First Parish Meeting House. It belonged to a group who ran the church. And I recall when he needed a paint job and the organization wanted to paint it, and the town stopped him from painting it. Why? Because they said it had lead paint. Now, EPA has said they could paint it and encapsulate the lead paint. But the town actually stopped it. And so the First Parish Meeting House, right on the very center of town, became an ice hole. And people, a lot of people would say, why don't you tear that building down? And we had this selectman, and he's here right now, Jackson, that he actually was interested in it and he saw a way to save it. And he added again to our center of town. So our town has a habit of letting the buildings, the historical buildings, deteriorate and now try to preserve them in some way. And that's what happened to the Winslow School. It's been there for what, Augie? How many years? 15, 20 years?
Oh, 1890 something, so 1899, so 125.
Of course it has, you know, we tried to fix it. We have a very limited budget, but we tried to fix things. But our budget just didn't, was not enough. But the building actually belonged to the town, but the town was not interested in. And when I say the town, I mean the fathers of the town. So, and here we are, at this point, saying, oh, it's gonna cost too much to restore it. We don't have to do it all at once. We can do it section by section, start from the outside, fix the roof, you know, make it look nice. And it would be a beautiful community center. And who knows, it can be an extension to the his town hall, who is running out of space. You know, let's face it, let's be real. You can put some offices there, too. So that is my thing about, you know, the history of town. I see neighboring towns, small towns like Dunstable, who have made an effort to save their Old Town Hall, their town hall. They have, it's taken less than a year to refurbish the Union School. You know, and it puts us to shame. That's a small town, but they are able to do that, rotten, the same way. Pepper, same way. You know, Drake it, where's the bigger town? But I'm focusing on the smaller towns around our town that are interested in keeping that New England historic feeling. This is our last building. We have no other buildings. And as far as the fire department is concerned, I think that Augie is correct. The east side needs a fire department, a fire station, more than we do here on the west because of the bridge. And now, being that there is 100 more residents on the other side of town because of the old Tinsborough country club, when it was sold, he added that. And now, remember, that's a community of 55 and over, which means that they will probably need more of the fire department than, we already have one here. I know it's small, but we have been able to manage all this time. So a new fire department should be on the east side because of the bridge. If we had another bridge, that would be a difference. But unfortunately, we don't. And I think if I lived in the east, I would be right here right now saying I want that fire department in the east side. You know? So that is what I have to say. Oh, and the other thing, before I forget. So if we put a fire department even behind the Winslow School, it's gonna take some of the open space in the back. Now, all the activities for open space are on the east side. We need to keep that place, that piece of land right here on this side, open. And as the block party grows, they're gonna be able to use that. They're gonna be able to use the Winslow School to make their festival of trees bigger than it is now. Because it's growing and you can see that it's very crowded now. I remember when it started at the Littlefield Library and then it went on to the Old Town Hall and now on to the First Parish Meeting House. And I think it could just overflow on to the Winslow School. And I don't like the idea of demolishing the building and building a fire department that looks just like the Winslow School because it would not be the Winslow. The history would not be there. So we're not just preserving a building, but we're preserving the history and the heritage.
Thank you. I think that answered the question that I asked. And if any, I don't know if anyone else from historical feels differently or wants to share their perspective, but it does sound like, from what I'm hearing, you would not be interested in the design including Winslow. It wouldn't be worth spending additional funds on this second schematic design. And I think we all hear that the desire is to not tear down Winslow and either have it on the back parcel or elsewhere. But that no one is thinking that the schematic design would be worthwhile to include the Winslow School.
I think we want more than a plaque saying this was the Winslow School. We want the actual building to be there.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Jeff.
Thank you. Select Person Cohane.
First of all, you have your answer that you needed tonight?
Well, given the sensitivity around the subject, I'll require a motion and a vote from you all so that I can blame someone. But the questions that Select Person Gilfis asked and the responses that they've given, I think certainly lead to what I'm looking from the board at this juncture.
So what I've seen and what I've, I guess, I'll call it the head nod. You don't want the Winslow School to be a part of the fire station, a small part of the Winslow being part of the fire station. You do not want that, correct?
Right.
The historical commission. So I think that was the answer that you wanted. Yeah, I don't want to repeat, there's been a lot of discussion going on, you know. You know, with the historical, you know, we've, you know, when it first started, you know, people would be sitting in a meeting going, where's our town center? I don't think they ask that now, right? We put a lot of money into grants. Before I got on, of course, the Old Town Hall was refurbished. In my first couple of years, we did the First Parish. You know, Bob took the lead role on that, but we got that. And we made what little land we had, you know, into a town center where we could have these big events that we currently have. I look at the Winslow parcel and, you know, I've gone a lot of different directions in my eight-plus years now on the board. You know, I know people, some people want it as open space. Some people want it as the Winslow, keep the Winslow School. And it's something that we're gonna have to decide, we're gonna have to decide. And I think as Augie said, and I, and I've heard from, from this town when it comes to a, a fire station, you know, I, I, I believe you all want a fire station. Uh, you just don't want it where, where we're proposing it right now. You know, and I don't think anybody should say anything different, by the way, either. But when it comes right down to it, sometimes it takes a long time to get to certain points to get something done. And, you know, I heard nineteen ninety, you talked about, you know, where the fire station should go. You know, it's been happening now for all eight years that I've been on the board. We've talked about it. We had a public safety, uh, you know, commission put together. And then, of course, the school came up. And then, we knew we couldn't do both, right? So, we, we went to the schools, we got so much money. And that's the way we went. I think that was the right decision. But, you know, now, if we don't do the fire station now, and if we don't do it very soon, we could be in the same situation as, you know, a decade from now, we're talking about it again. And Wes will be telling me again, you know, I've been telling you for a decade already to this point, that it's critical now. We're at a critical stage. We really do need this. And I truly believe we need it. And now, we really need to come up with a decision where we're gonna have it. You know, some people have asked me the land, you know, can we put it in another location? Since the Public Safety Building Committee got disbanded four or five years ago, somewhere around that point, we were tasked with, with looking for property. We've been looking for it constantly. People were giving us ideas of different land. You know, we thought with Notre Dame, we, we, you know, that was something that we, we've asked them for four or five years, willing to sell us some land. You're willing to sell us some land, 'cause at least it's closer to the bridge, right? So, you know, Wes was involved in those discussions. That, that's gone nowhere. And we keep looking. And at some point, I think, we, we need to figure out where exactly this fire station's gonna go. We already have the funds. Colin has his, I believe he has his, uh, what he needs for tonight. Uh, the Winslow is not gonna be part of it, so he can actually go into, uh, you know, award the contract. But in the end, I mean, as of right now, I'm afraid the only place for the fire station really is on the Winslow property that we have, we have targeted. And we'll keep look, you know, we, we've looked for, for a long time. Wes was looking even before I got on the board. Uh, we've been looking for our best property. We met with a lot of consultants, and we asked them the hard questions. We didn't say we wanted Winslow School. First of all, we asked, "Where, where, where should it go?" And just like Wes said, it needs to go on the west side. It needs to go near the bridge. That's the biggest bottleneck. The faster you get across that, the quicker you can get across that, the better. And they came up with designs of, of how, you know, to improve from what they have today to improve getting over the bridge. But having said all that, um, that's kind of my thoughts. And, uh, you know, to the residents as community, you know, please, please stay engaged. We have a lot of community. We're gonna be asking for a lot of opinions and a lot of different people. We're glad the historical commission came in tonight. Thank you. But we have a lot, we, you know, we, we're gonna keep moving forward. We're gonna figure out the best way. And we're, but we really do wanna get even more customer input. Like Colin said, we only need one decision tonight. And then after that, we're gonna, you know, have, have some more meetings and some more get togethers with the residents and keep talking this through, because as you all said, you don't, you don't like the decision that, you know, at this point. Some people, um, we keep asking the residents, and I think we gotta get a lot more information out to the residents. You know, we, we've talked about this now for, I don't know how many months now. And I think at this point, we've really gotta get to the point where we gotta start giving the residents a lot more information and have a lot more community feedback and just keep trying to, uh, get a better understanding of where the community is at.
Select person Coughlin.
Yes. So, as the newest, um, select board member here, it's great to meet everyone. And, um, I think I know where everybody stands. I just have a question, and it's probably more for Colin. But, and the second one, B, direct town manager to proceed with a schematic design of a new build. So, if the thought was to have it where the Winslow School is now or behind, that's B.
That's B.
Thank you.
Correct. And the, the big difference is that to do A, the designer would have to get to work very quickly, familiarizing themselves with the existing schoolhouse. So, then directing me to do B tonight through a motion of the board, they can skip that whole process. And then, they'll have several weeks where they can start working with the chief to understand the space program, the needs, looking at some of the past work we've done before, from a cost perspective. Again, nothing is final till you start building and you get to having approval before we need to know what the placement is going to be simply from a cost perspective, not to then next day be out there demoing something or spending money.
And then, how much would it cost for the second schematic design? How much would something like that be? And then, would they look at, would that be like somewhere else? Or it's always gonna be there regardless of those two?
This board has selected that parcel as its preferred site. A schematic design of a new build, because we're just in the schematic design, technically can be plopped down on any raw land that we have access to. As long as we're not including, which has been very, I think it's clear that we don't want to, as long as we're not including any elements of the original Winslow School, then you have the most flexibility with a new design.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my only comments, and I'm, we, we, you know, we've been talking about this for a while now. Yeah, I think the elephant, there's, there's two elephants in the room, right? We, you know, we talk about historical needs versus our emergency needs. One of the elephants in the room is traffic. No matter what we do, we're not gonna improve traffic in the center of town. We can put that fire station anywhere. The traffic is what the traffic is. The bridge is what the bridge is. It's not gonna move. We're not building a second bridge in the foreseeable future. So, we just have to deal with the traffic. We can, we can work with technology to try to figure out the traffic. But, but the traffic is what it is, and the bridge is, is what it is. But the elephant, the other elephant in the room, and, and, and Mr. Eldridge referred to this, we don't have an unlimited pot of money, and we don't have an unlimited pot of land. And so, when we get to the townspeople in, in the Maytown meeting, money is an object, right? And so, as much as we'd love to keep that, that parcel completely intact, fiscally, I don't think the town would, would buy it if we say we have to go out and buy land somewhere else in town to put the fire station so that we can accommodate that entire parcel of land. Love to do it, but I, I just don't see it. I think that is, I think that is the elephant in the room, is, is the money that it's gonna cost to do this project. It's not gonna be cheap. But it has to be done. It has to be done. I mean, that's, that's really all I have. I think everyone else has, as we've all beaten to death, um, all the various angles. We're not gonna fix the traffic problem by moving the, the fire station one place or another. We don't have the money to, to build two fire stations. We know we need to put adequate, an adequate fire station on, on this side of the town to house all of our firefighters. We don't have the money to then replicate that on the other side of town also. We just don't. So, um, we're gonna have to work with the, sort of the pot of money we have, with the land that we have, and, and, and just deal with the traffic issues that we have. And, and I don't think it's gonna be made worse by moving the station one place or another. It's probably not gonna be made better. But we, but it is, we, that's the town we have. You know, the, the, the land in the center of town is, is all we've got. And there's, there's no other place to, to build it without incurring a whole bunch more costs. But like I say, the elephant in the room here is, is the money that this project will ultimately cost. And that's what the townspeople are gonna be looking at. How much are you gonna add to my tax bill? And, um, and it, you know, it behooves us to be able to say we've done our darn best to keep this cost as low and as reasonable as possible and, and still try to get this top fire station built. Okay. So, do we need to make a motion, select personnel?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, and, and first off, I'd like to thank all of you. The passion and the honesty was very helpful in getting through this. But, Mr. Chair, I vote that the select board direct the town manager to proceed with a schematic design of a new build only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Any further discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same. That carries five zero zero. Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I can't believe no one wants to hear the rest of our meeting.
Don't we hear select board reports? Yep, I think so. I don't see anything else.
Okay. My favorite part of the night, select board reports. Select person Eldridge, you wanna get a start?
Oh, I get to go!
I'm going, I'm going to my right today.
All right. He's right-handed today.
So, the, I had the honor of being at the, um, Health and Safety Fair the other day to present on behalf of the board a, um, an acknowledgement of Juliana Fisher, who did a great job. Eleven-year-old, smart, composed, brave. We all saw it on the news. So, I thought that that was, I thought that was fantastic. That made all the news. However, I did want to, um, just commend, um, so Brad Bisconet and, and the folks of the fire and the Board of Health have a just tremendous, um, Health and Safety Fair there between police and fire and highway department. And then inside, they had a health fair with, with other people that were around. I was able to go through and do the, um, the presentation of the proclamation. And then I gave blood. And it was all in that one little area at the elementary school. And I think it was, it was fantastic. So, just another one of the things that happened in this town for people to be proud of. It's great for the kids. It, it's the old touch a truck type of thing, but it, they've kind of taken it to the, to the next level. And, um, if you didn't get a chance this year, I feel confident that it'll be there again next year. Great time was had by all. So, um, I, I just wanted to thank all those who coordinated and did a lot of work to get that going. So, that's it.
Thank you. Select person Gilfis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm really glad that we did this. I'm really, really glad that historical came and we had this discussion. And, you know, looking at the time, I, I think we clocked about an hour and fifteen minutes on this discussion. And last meeting, the discussion about Ironwood and ultimately the long discussion about pickleball, I think that was about an hour. And I just, I really appreciate that members of the community are coming out to talk about things that they are passionate about and that are important to them. We, we all have other things that we could be doing with our time. Certainly, we've all made a commitment to be here as part of select board. We wouldn't have run if we weren't committed to doing this. But I think it's really special when residents come out for things that are sort of impromptu or just things that are relevant and important to them that they feel strongly about. One thing that select person Coughlin and I have been talking about is just the way that we engage with residents and talk to them and the way that they're able to share, um, information with us. And certainly, um, in the last few weeks, I have received many emails and have been reached by residents in a number of channels. And I haven't known what the best way to respond is. And that's something that, um, select person Coughlin and I have been talking about, that sometimes it doesn't feel right to respond to someone's email because it doesn't feel, mm, I don't know, it feels cold i- in some ways, that it feels very, um, I don't want it to come across as like a canned response or something that, you know, I'm doing out of obligation. But I do want residents to feel like their voices and thoughts are heard, and so that way, we are responding to them in some capacity. And so, I certainly don't have a, a recommendation right now. And maybe it's something that we can add to an agenda in a future meeting. But I think, um, I just feel very aware of the ways that we invite members of the community to participate with us and to share their opinions and to share their perspectives. And just making sure that we, as a select board, are able to take that information into consideration and respond appropriately. But the long and short is, I'm really grateful to hear from people, even if, um, the messages are hard to hear. I am grateful to receive them because I know that people care very deeply about the things that they take the time to write in about or attend meetings about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Select person Cohane.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank Matt Bogatz and Mike Knight for meeting me at the Drake and Pickleball Courts. We had a very good discussion, and I followed up with, uh, Mike afterward. And Mike made it clear he wants to move on, and he agreed I could share that here tonight with everybody. And I agree, we wanna move on and improve Ironwood Park. That's always been the goal, is to improve Ironwood Park. I also appreciate the Recreation Committee, Select Board voting on and approving a new rule for the pickleball courts. When the rule was posted on the courts, uh, myself and others have asked residents, before they went on the courts, uh, you know, that there are new rule. And the residents, you know, were very positive and very accommodating and understanding there's a new rule. And everybody kept stuff off the courts, at least when I was there. And as I've said many times in my select board reports, uh, Ironwood Park is a gem, an absolute gem. It was an honor to serve on the Sherburne Committee that helped design Ironwood Park. It was one of my favorite committees. Ironwood represents a major community investment and a long-term commitment to our town. The Recreation Committee, who have done an excellent job, has reminded us that we're still learning. And that's really true for all of us. I look forward to listening and continuing discussion on how we can keep improving our gem, Ironwood Park. The other thing we talked a lot about tonight is a new fire station. We've talked about it for many months now. We'll be putting together plans to get more of your input and ideas on this important topic. There's still a lot of hard work ahead, and we want your voices really to be part of the process. It's a tough decision, uh, you know, and we just need to keep working through it. But we need the residents to stay engaged. You know, the select board will be working to get all the information out to the residents so everybody understands the potential impact, as we've talked about a lot tonight. You know, this is your community. I encourage everyone to stay engaged on this important topic. Ask questions and remain informed as we move forward through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Select person Coughlin.
Yes, I just want to, um, add to select, um, person Gilfis's comments about engagement of the community. And I think that's really important to foster that, not because of what we can offer, but also what they can offer us as well. And so, everybody lives busy lives, right? And so, for them to reach out, whether it's positive or negative, for them to reach out, it takes a commitment. And it's, it's very important for us to make sure that we're recognizing that. So, I think that that's something that I did, had reached out and would probably look at at a future, um, select board meeting. On a positive note, and I think because of all that was, has been happening in our little community for the past few weeks, I, I actually had somebody reach out to me, a young man, to say that he thinks it's time to get involved. And, um, he's a new parent, so, and he, he asked my advice to be, um, on the select, being on the select board. So, I'm probably not the person at this point, right? But, um, I thought maybe as a new parent, he might look at the school committee or just like that, like new blood. So, I think that was a positive spin to everything. So, um, you know, I thought that was, yeah.
Thank you. Did I miss something in the last meeting? Anything happen here?
No.
So, from, from what I, and I apologize, I wasn't here in the last meeting. But, um, as I, as I sort of thought about what transpired over the last several weeks, I thought there was, there was a few lessons a few lessons that came out of that, at least in my mind. You know, number one, if you're going to communicate ideally in person, face-to-face versus social media, it's probably better. It's not always possible, clearly, but that way someone can read your body language, can understand what you're saying, can engage with you. You know, I remember, you know, a year or so ago, I remember getting an email from my minister. It was all in capital letters, which indicates that someone is shouting at you, and I said, "What did I do wrong?" And he said, "I forgot to hit the cap button." Right? But, so it can be, it can, a written message can be misinterpreted sometimes. The other, the next thing I thought about was privacy versus public, you know? I think we've learned that nothing is private on social media. The word "social," right? It's socialized. It gets spread everywhere. We have to be careful, but we can use that as a teaching moment to the young people in town, perhaps, right? Where you say, "Be careful what you post online, because it's going to spread everywhere, whether you intend that way or not." But the third thing that I thought about was public officials versus private citizens. And is, can a public official have a private life? And can they have their own private opinions? And I feel strongly that they, that they, that they should, right? I know, and sometimes it's very difficult to separate someone's public persona from their private persona. It blends together. We see that all the time in national politics. People express opinions, and it's like, "Well, they're a public official, so they really shouldn't be saying that." But I feel strongly that even though we're a publicly elected body, we are entitled to our own private thoughts and opinions, our First Amendment rights. We might be, we might be required to have to defend those when people challenge us, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be able to maintain our private lives while also engaging the public. So, that's all I've got. Those are the things that I thought about from a distance, wish I had been here. I think that wraps up our meeting tonight. Yep. Selectperson Eldridge.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Ferris v. Tinsborough Planning Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We will do a roll call vote. Selectperson Coughlin.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.